Good afternoon. Thank you for coming this way there. I appreciate it, and thank you for joining us.
Of course.
And all the trustees. Item number one, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of February the 6th, 2016?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, so we have a long agenda this afternoon, so we're gonna go right through them. Item one B one, College of Staten Island, I see the president is here. A A in electrical engineering.
Yes. The master of engineering in electrical engineering is designed as a professional degree, providing advanced skills and expertise necessary for career success in industries such as telecommunications, smart infrastructure, and information technology. While this has been designed as a professional program, it has also been designed for students to be able to transfer seamlessly into traditional PhD programs, particularly the one in electrical engineering at City College. Colleagues, this program is important because it will be the only master's in engineering program on Staten Island, a borough of 450,000 students, and it will also be potentially attractive to students from the other southern boroughs. And it will be a relatively economical program, but there's already great interest in the program from the Bachelor of Science students in engineering, a very successful ABDAC accredited program. So...
I so move the adoption of this program? Approve of this program?
Ever, yeah, question. So, no, I'm glad to see that we do have the advanced digital communications in this, which is important.
Yes.
And what I want to be sure of is that, are we going to have all of the necessary equipment in order to execute this total engineering? I mean, what's the equipment going to be like? So that way, we can make sure that people are operating with advanced equipment and knowledge.
Yeah, it's an excellent question.
Does anybody from the college want to?
Yes, and we just had a...
Yeah. Welcome, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're at the college, we're very excited about this program. It fits into our jobs on Staten Island economic development. I think you're asking a very important question. We can always use more science equipment if any of our labs, but we've just had a very successful accreditation visit of the bachelor's program, and it was the creditors' opinion that based on the facilities that we had, that we should move rapidly toward the master's program with the existing equipment. So I would never turn down the opportunity to look for more laboratory equipment, but we have sufficient facilities there.
Okay, now, that's good, because the advanced, the digital communications is an extremely important component. There are a number of components in this that are important, but when I look at this program, at the master's level especially, that's gonna be critical, and a lot of times we can't, we don't want to have people participating in the program and really not have up-to-date equipment in order to execute the degree appropriately. So, that's very good. That's the only question that I have.
Also, I want to take this opportunity to welcome the student trustee. I won't try to butcher your name.
Chico.
So, without any further questions, then let me call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number B two, one B two, Borough of Manhattan Community College, A A in psychology.
Yes.
Do you want to do the A S in science, the health professionals?
Yes, if I may.
So, we're gonna call two items together, a B two and B three, because there, we have a long agenda. Borough of Manhattan Community College, A A in psychology, A S in science for health professions.
Yes. BMCC is continuing to advance its strategic plan to create liberal arts majors in specific disciplines, especially disciplines of high demand like psychology, by packaging existing courses into degree programs designed to transfer to CUNY's senior colleges. Psychology is the latest such program. This body has considered other liberal arts programs, and an articulation agreement has already been signed with John J. College. Others are being developed. The college believes that this approach will improve retention and graduation rates, and indeed received a major grant to fulfill this strategic vision of creating degree programs as pathways to bachelor's degrees. The A S in science for health professions. This transfer program is composed of an interdisciplinary array of science courses that will provide students with the foundation needed for a wide range of health science bachelor's degrees throughout CUNY. Articulation agreements to three programs at Lehman College have been signed, and others throughout the system will be sought. Specifically, this degree program hopes to prepare students for careers in practitioner professions like dieticians, nutritionists, and exercise practitioners. Again, it's the scientific basis for a suite of practical programs.
I move adoption of the resolution establishing this program. Second.
Second, the trustee, you know, discussions, questions?
Yeah, so for the A A in psychology, and one of the things that is postured here is that we'd be able to help individuals to prepare for STEM professions. What in the curriculum is going to enable that to happen in that particular degree program? Can somebody explain that to me?
Anybody from BMCC wants to respond? Come on up and identify yourself.
Good afternoon, I'm Janice Walters from Manhattan Community College. We are very focused on psychology as a STEM, and we have incorporated certainly the research in psychology course as an introductory for students into research that we hope will promote STEM interests for them and careers. And then, of course, when they move to the senior colleges, they can continue with that, but we feel it's very important for us to give them that introduction very early on.
Are there going to be enough foundational courses in statistics and research in order to really prepare people, so that way, when they move on to a bachelor's degree, that they're prepared? Because I think that's gonna be critical. Will that happen in this program?
Yes, it will. We have a statistics course. We're also encouraging them to take biology as part of STEM, because we feel that that's very important to underlying psychological concepts.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Oh, what about, will there be any opportunities for practical experience or any type of internships or something like that with this particular program? So individuals are applying their statistics and learning to real-life situations?
We hope that the research course will do that, but we also would like to explore other possibilities of internships for students who become part of this program. I think it would be great to do that.
I think that the internships are critical to giving people practical basis for really understanding, especially in this particular area, so.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, so we definitely will explore more opportunities for our students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions, motion carries. Item number one B four, Queensborough Community College, A S in public health.
Yes. This interdisciplinary program will introduce students to the field of public health through courses in science, health, and health policy. It has been designed to transfer seamlessly to the Hunter College Bachelor's Program in public health, and other articulations are under review. Queensborough's program is a rigorous course of study, including biology, statistics, epidemiology, public health education. And again, it is already designed to articulate with Hunter's program.
I move adoption of the resolution creating this program.
Thank you, trustee. Second, the trustee, Martino. Discussions, questions?
There's a question that we have over here. Sorry.
No questions?
So, from this program, it's an A S in public health, what type of careers are we preparing people for with an A S in this area? Maybe somebody from Queensborough can speak to that.
Provost is here.
Is it in front of any mic? Please use the mic.
Speak into the mic and identify yourself. Thank you. Paul M. Casey, Provost, Queensborough Community College.
So, the question is, what careers are we preparing these students for? The public health industry is growing. Numbers are between 25 and 35 percent. And it goes, there's a whole gamut. There's the whole public health, there's research, there's, let's see, it's in my time, but basically, there's a lot of new opportunities, and also, the field itself is changing, so there are new positions being created, something like healthcare facilitator, someone who helps people navigate the healthcare system.
Are there, however, in some of those, in those areas, are there not other certifications that are needed in order to operate in those areas, or are we preparing people for that? I just want to be sure that we're not offering a degree that's not gonna lead to anywhere, you know, in terms of preparing. I mean, I think, yes, it's nice, it's good, everybody's into public health. At this level, though, I'm just wanting to make sure that we are offering people something that they can really utilize afterwards. That's my question.
So, at this level, it's more, it's an associate's degree.
Yes.
So, we're talking, it's a general program to help prepare students to go into the different tracks, such as nutrition, such as public education. With an associate's degree, their options are a little bit limited, let's honestly, but we are working with the four-year colleges. We do have several articulations in play or in the works, and we are also working, you know, creating internship, we're looking into internship opportunities, also something called service learning, experiential learning. So, we're facilitating the ability for the students to get jobs once they do graduate.
I'm wondering if Dana Almohandes, if you could just give us some insight also on this and how you see this aligning with your program.
Yeah, no, there's no question that there's tremendous national interest in associate degrees in public health, and this interest is best represented in currently the Association of Schools and Programs in Public Health, creating memorandum of understanding with the National Association for Community Colleges nationally. This is bolstered by the fact that the Affordable Care Act brought with it, through Medicaid reimbursement, specific lines of reimbursement, especially for community health navigators, insurance navigators, and informatics specialists that work at the hospital level and are recognized with the associate degree level, and compensated as very defined lines through Medicaid at an entry level, at approximately $25,000 per annum, going up to $40,000 for supervisory positions.
Okay.
So, this is a very important recognizable entree into the public health profession. The second is that many local departments of health have been hiring high school graduates because of the level of compensation that they can afford, and the move today is to encourage students to get baseline background education in public health, to take their entry-level positions in local departments of health that are currently limited in their resources, and would be much served by people at the entry level having the background education in public.
Fantastic, okay, thank you, thank you very much. No, I think it's good, but, you know, and naturally, I'm supportive, but I want to make sure that we're all together on this.
Hi, so I am a student at Hunter College, and I'm actually a part of the community health program at Hunter. So, looking at the requirements for your major, so, for example, I'll relate it to my major. So, for example, we do, we, our focus is mostly around social disparities, and there are courses for digital media, so there's a focus. But looking at the courses here compared to the coursework that I'll be taking, to me, it seems a bit empty. So, can you speak towards, is there like a concentration, or as I think, as he asks, is there a goal that if I go out with these one, two, three, four, five, six courses, like, what exactly am I offering to tell people that I've learned through this program? So, for me, it's like, I can go to somewhere and say, I've learned about social disparities, and I understand how socioeconomic and, you know, different backgrounds work, and media, but from this, it's like, you're giving them very general courses, and of course, respectfully, I've taken the same courses, but it's like, what is it that makes this program different?
So, well, the idea was not to make it, sorry?
If I may?
If you could come to the table, to a mic.
Any more people up here?
There are a lot of empty chairs up here.
Okay, there's a mic.
Please identify yourself to the mic.
Yes, certainly. Andrea Salas from Queensborough Community College. This is a transfer degree program, this A S program, that's articulating with Hunter College's program, which begins at the junior level. So, students who come into your program, the community health program, come in at the third year, the junior year. This program is the first two years, where students will be able to make up majority of their general education requirements, including, particularly with regard to Hunter, the introduction of sociology course and a second-level sociology course that'll help prepare them to then take those upper-level courses that you are describing, so that they will be able to have a more specific focus. So, if that answers your question.
Okay, and then the second part of my question is, since you spoke in regards to maybe internships, so, for example, that's one of the things we have to do now. I'm fortunate, I can do a wide variety of internships, but there are a lot of students who don't have those connections, who don't have access. So, can you speak a little bit about any process that you have in place to help students obtain any internships while they'll be doing the program?
Yes, so we will have, this is a process that will be ongoing to creating relationships with various healthcare organizations. We did, as part of this proposal, receive letters of recommendation from Northwell Health Hospital, who is very interested in not only our program, but in developing our internships or experiential learning assignments for our students to participate in, and that's just one of many. This program will also include, is, will be, is both run by the Biology Department as well as the Health Education Department in our college. So, the Biology Department has very much established relationships with various organizations, so that's going to, to enable students to participate in research as well. So, that's another focus that we have for this program.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? No, let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Item number one B five, Medgar Evers College, BFA in performing arts.
Yes. This innovative program, which includes courses in a wide array of the performing arts as well as in media, especially digital design and technology, will advance the college's mission to provide high-quality, professionally-oriented degree programs within a liberal arts context. A master amendment, a master plan amendment will be required for this program, as it is the first by Medgar Evers within this field of study, and the college's first BFA. This program has been in development for quite some time, and is important to the college as a response to strong student interest, to opportunities in Brooklyn, and it establishes Medgar Evers in this niche field. So, I present it for your consideration.
I move adoption of this resolution for the creation of this BFA in performing arts. Second.
Second, the trustee, Martino, discussions?
Yes, so, and I'm not gonna comment on every one, but it's just, I think we have some very good programs, and it's important for us to have a discussion and understand them better. So, what I'd like to do is to understand, given all of the time that it has taken us to develop the program, as you have said, what makes, what makes this truly innovative versus other BFA programs? I mean, why, what is it that we have in the curriculum that distinguishes this from other BFA programs?
Excellent question. I see the provost.
Okay. Just identify yourself for the...
The provost, Medgar Evers College, and I have with me the chair of the department, Dr. Clinton Crawford, so I will defer to him to answer, respond to that.
Well, I'm sure everyone understands that we live in a digital environment, and that the conventional way of addressing the performing arts is not subsumed by this digital environment. So, nowhere except at master's levels at University of Arizona and alma mater, the University of California, Santa Barbara, is there a program on the graduate level which prepares people to meld both the performing arts and media, as it were. This doesn't exist at the City University of New York, and we found that this was the right opportunity and the right moment to gift, not only to Medgar Evers College, but the City University as a whole.
Okay, and what other external organizations are, would this program be aligned with in order to ensure that we're able to cultivate that particular skill? I think it's a good thought that you bring up, you know, in terms of digital. Matter of fact, we were just talking about that in terms of a previous program, digital communications and engineering, you know, and it's good to see that in the area of performance and dance and all of that art, you know, that we're able to incorporate that. What organizations are we aligned with that would help us to continue to cultivate and build on that?
I'm know, you're very much aware that Brooklyn Navy Yard is the umbrella business portal, as it were, today, and that we have large support from the Brooklyn Navy Yard businesses. There are hundreds of businesses that are based in media and digital technology in that area. Plus, right now, we have a relationship with the Lincoln Center. We have an exchange, a teacher-artist exchange with Lincoln Center. Of course, the Brooklyn Museum of Art is right in our backyard, and we have been working with Brooklyn Museum for a very long time, and so is BAM, right, just down the street from us. So, and beside that, there are a number of smaller institutions in Brooklyn itself that we have created relationships with already.
Good, thank you.
I have a question. Dr. Crawford?
Yes.
Well, provost, I completely support this. I think this is wonderful to have a fine arts program at, a performing arts program at Medgar Evers. I'm a little concerned that you're offering, you're proposing to offer a baccalaureate degree, and you have three faculty members, three full-time faculty members for a baccalaureate degree program. I do know that in your proposal, you plan to hire four more. Could you tell us the timeline for hiring four?
Well, two of those numbers that you've just cited are already, they're operating at a substitute level, and they'll be in our program as soon as the program is approved by this body and other bodies, as it were. And also, the three faculty members you cite, they are on the professorate, but we still have people who are at the lecture level and some of, a very stellar adjunct career faculty that makes this program and their contributions to the program very valuable.
So, you're searching now for two full-time faculty?
We have, we have two full-time faculty.
Yes, searching for two.
Yes, in position.
Two substitute, right.
They're in the substitute position now.
Right, I understand.
And we have not put out the call completely yet, we're just waiting for your approval.
I see.
Is there, is there an opportunity, given the external organizations that you're aligned with, would there, would there be an opportunity that you will pursue in order to get support, funding, and even grants? So, that way, you have a stronger relationship and also a feeder system for a number of these organizations, thinking center, all of the places, BAM, all of the places that you mentioned. Individuals many times will start in those organizations, and they're sort of learning on the job. This is giving people the requisite skills and building their competency. It would seem that there's a vested interest that those organizations ought to have in having an educated workforce that can feed right into them. And also, in terms of funding, that you can expand the funding base, you know, really capitalizing on that. Is that something you're going to really be entrepreneurial about?
Yes, you know, currently, we have funding from the Carnegie Foundation to do this, you know, with the Teaching Artists and Lincoln Center, since about $300,000, $500,000 funding from them, and we are hoping to, of course, our president is exploring to get that from the Ford Foundation too, we're exploring funding from there, and then, of course, the faculty are coming together to write grants to be able to support this, knowing that Brooklyn is really the center of performance in the world now, so we hope there'll be interest in terms of that, yes.
I mean, you know, for example, I mean, looking at the, you know, the Academy, the Motion Picture Academy, I mean, there are a number of other organizations like that that need to also increase diversity, you know, in their ranks and everybody that, I mean, films and production shouldn't only be evaluated by what's on the screen, but also what's behind the scenes in order to move things forward. I'm just hoping that we really will capitalize on that. Sounds like you have the seeds of a thought that will do that, and I'd enjoy hearing more about that later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great questions, great answers, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions, motion carries. Item number one B six, Brooklyn College, CUNY Haitian Studies Institute.
Yes.
I see the president is here.
Yes. Brooklyn is the home to the largest concentration of people of Haitian descent in New York State. This institute hopes to become a leading international research and scholarly institute in Haitian studies, supporting scholars and scholarship concerned with the discipline, and to connect research through community outreach that affects the lives of Haitian Americans and Haiti. The goals of the institute are as follows: to become a leading international research institute in the field of Haitian studies, support scholars, and connect institutions pursuing scholarship on Haiti, Haitians, and/or people of Haitian origin; to augment capacity for collaboration between CUNY and higher education institutions in Haiti and those involved in research on Haiti and the Haitian community; to examine achievements of Haitians and Haitian Americans on the world stage; and finally, to connect research through community outreach that deepens understandings about policies affecting the lives of Haitians in the United States, the diaspora, and Haiti.
Thank you. So, I move adoption of this resolution. Second.
Second, the trustee, Martino, discussions?
I have a question.
Sure.
This is, I support this, this is excellent, but the document that you provided to us on page, well, the third sheet from the end, Appendix 11, CUNY-affiliated faculty, staff, and graduate students, could you explain what this is, what their affiliation is and who they're affiliated with?
Yes, good afternoon. Karen Gould, president of Brooklyn College. Yes, I appreciate the question. These are individuals who have all in one way or another been affiliated with the planning of this institute.
With the planning?
They are not, they are not, hires made by Brooklyn College, they are individuals, faculty primarily across CUNY, on 11 campuses, actually, who have been involved in one way or another. Some of them have been on the planning committee, some of them have been involved in planning events at various CUNY campuses, including a recent one at City Tech. So, depending upon the individuals involved, we decided to, the planning committee decided to enumerate all of that.
I think it's wonderful you're acknowledging them. It just gives the impression inadvertently that they're affiliated with the institute.
Well, they're affiliated with supporting the idea of the institute.
Okay, thank you.
It takes a village, I will tell you, maybe a city, but...
Yes, that's a good point. We look forward to honoring you in a few days.
Thank you very much, trustee. Any other questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? Okay. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions, motion carries. Item number one B seven, CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, CUNY Institute for Implementation, Science, Research, and Population Health. And you want to do the second item together, you want to do separate?
Yes, actually, I would be pleased to do them together. These are two new institutes from the CUNY school.
Okay, so also, item number B eight, which is CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, the CUNY Urban Food Policy Institute. the CUNY Urban Food Policy Institute.
Yes, yes. The new CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and, and Health Policy puts forward two new institutes. The first, the Institute for Implementation Science Research in Population. The central mission of this CUNY institute is to translate research into sustainable, cost-effective, population-level interventions, strategies, initiatives, and policy that have proven value in improving health on a large scale and the promise of reducing health disparities around the city and around the world. The overarching goal of the institute is to conduct large-scale research studies on population health and on intervention implementation in real-world settings. The institute will be inherently multidisciplinary and collaborative and will engage clinical researchers, healthcare organizations, community-based organizations, and policymakers, as well as faculty across CUNY's twenty-four colleges.
I move adoption of the resolution creating this institute.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion, any questions?
I would just like to say that I love the charts on page nineteen and twenty, where we have first the base case scenario of the institute revenue versus expense, and then the optimistic scenario
Yes, right.
of the institute revenue versus expenses, and then the pessimistic scenario of those. I think that's a wonderful, honest, very clear way of presenting, um,
It gives you a.
possibilities, yes, the, the possible paths very clearly outlined and very well identified by optimistic and pessimistic stuff. Whoever wrote this is to be commended.
He's here in this room, Dr. Dennis Nash. Yes.
Wow, congratulations. This is a wonderful proposal.
Any questions?
Just on this, we're gonna go to the, uh.
Both of them are together on the same time.
Yes, yes.
I, I just wonder, first of all, I think it's a good, good idea, right? Uh, it's great. The, the name, Urban Food Institute, I, this will really deal with food, uh, in more than just urban areas in the United States, right? It's, yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if it has the, uh, appropriate nomenclature to, to, to demo, so that it demonstrates that we're looking at issues on a worldwide basis. Or maybe somebody can just comment?
Yes, we have the author of the proposal present, distinguished professor Nick Foidenberg. Nick, would you?
If you want.
Yes, yes, if you would.
How are you doing, Nick?
Hi, thanks for your question. So I think the, uh, notion is that we have an obligation to New York City. Uh, but then New York City has an opportunity to both learn from other cities around the world and also to share lessons that we've experienced here. And by, uh, we deliberately did not include New York City in our title. Uh, and what we mean by urban food policy is both, uh, local, national, and global. So it's very much that idea that you present that we hope to develop.
Yeah, because I know that you have, I mean, information and research, you've done work globally. Truly reflects what, what you're doing, you know, your body, your body of work.
Yes, one of our lines of work is to look at how, uh, both, uh, high, low, and middle-income countries are responding to child obesity and we hope to develop and expand.
That's great, that's great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Um, the motion carries. Item number one, B, number nine, Queensborough Community College, the closing of the Academic Literacy Department.
Yes.
I'm wondering, did, uh, Dean, uh, Dean O'Mahonness, did you want to say something?
No, not at all. I, I just wanna say that, uh, living in large urban metropolitan areas presents food challenges that are unique to urban areas, not shared by peri-urban, rural, and semi-rural areas. And so focusing on the challenges facing big cities with the largest concentrations of the human population and over-representation of poverty is a very worthwhile cause. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes.
The closing of the Academic Literacy Department.
Yes. This proposed reorganization by Queensborough Community College is intended to leverage faculty strengths by reorganizing them into one academic department, that is, the Department of English, to provide the necessary structural that will promote faculty collaboration, enhance instruction, and without doing so at the cost of student progress. The English department is prepared to provide the necessary organizational structure that will better support the college's mission.
I move adoption of this item.
Second the motion.
Second, if I trust you, Di Martino. Discussions, questions? Seems very straightforward. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions, motion carries. Item number one, B ten, uh, CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, establishment of four academic departments, um.
Yes, yes. As the CUNY School of Public Health transitions from a previously consorcial model to a unified graduate school renamed the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, it has also, um, chosen to reorganize into academic departments in order to best fulfill its academic and scholarly mission. The school seeks to create four academic departments where previously there were none. They are the Department of Community Health and Social Sciences, the Department of Environmental, Occupational, and Geospatial Health Sciences, the Department of Epidemiology and Biostatistics, and finally, the Department of Health Policy and Management.
I move adoption of this.
If I trust you, Kaplowitz.
Second the motion.
If I trust you, Di Martino. The floor is open for discussion.
I, I like this proposal. I'm just wondering if you can just provide us the intellectual context for why you're looking at these departments in this particular matter? Yeah, I wanna hear it. I wanna understand it.
Well, um, um, pub-, public health as, uh, an interdisciplinary domain of learning is, uh, is divided into quantitative, uh, sciences, social and behavioral sciences, and management, economics, financial sciences, and policy. So the distribution of these departments, I, I would have hoped to present you with something innovative, earth-shattering. But unfortunately, it falls very well within the identified domains of learning and practice in public health.
And I assume the faculty members decided which departments they belong.
Yes.
No, that's good, and that's an important piece too. Thank you very much, Beth. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, so no more questions? Uh, let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one, B eleven, CUNY Plan for Experiential and, uh, or Applied Learning Activities.
Yes. CUNY's plan for experiential or applied learning activities, uh, was developed by President Jeremy Travis of John Jay College, who was here with us this evening, and University Dean Suri Deitch. They were appointed, also present tonight, appointed by Chancellor Miliken in consultation with the University Faculty Senate, the University Student Senate, and other stakeholders. In the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen New York State budget, CUNY and SUNY were required to develop a plan for experiential learning and to adopt such a plan by June of two thousand sixteen. The plan that you see before you defines approved, um, experiential or applied learning activities, explores potential methods of enhancing faculty oversight and assessment of such activities, identifies potential methods for expanding student engagement, considers new ways of expanding partnerships with businesses, corporate, nonprofit, or other entities hosting students, and put fo-, puts forth some steps for developing a data collection tracking system, um, so that CUNY has a better sense of what experiential learning activities exist system-wide. The report addresses the question of feasibility of making experiential learning a degree requirement at CUNY. And the, and the report advises against such a graduation requirement, given how very difficult it would be to implement such a requirement and to ensure that it truly helped students make progress toward degrees instead of improving. So again, President, uh, President Travis and Dean Deitch are here this evening.
So I move, uh, adoption of this resolution.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, discussions, questions? Why we have the president here and the dean here? Welcome.
So I do have a question. Um, this is an excellent report and, um, that all the faculty, um, at the university faculty senate, as well as at campus-based senates, to my knowledge, agree with this conclusion that, um, experiential learning is a wonderful opportunity for students, but for all the reasons cited in this report, there should not be a graduation requirement of, um, experimental learning. So, in adopting this report, is the, is Capra recommending to the board to adopt the position, the policy position, that ELO not be a graduation requirement?
Given that that was one of the major recommendations, Professor Kaplowitz, the answer is yes. There are other recommendations as well, and they're very worthwhile.
Excellent, yes.
Yes.
Good. That's what I was hoping.
Do you want to say anything?
Yes.
I, I, I'd like to note for the record that the Faculty Senate of John Jay College of Criminal Justice unanimously voted its recommendation in, in, when this report was, um, being put together and, uh, responses were being solicited, um, unanimously voted that ELO should not be a graduation requirement. And, um, so I'm very pleased to see the, the conclusions of this report.
Duly noted, thank you for that comment. Uh, any other discussions?
I have one question. So I agree with, um, your stance on it not being a graduation requirement. In terms of the actual inspir-, experiential learnings, the ones that will be paid or unpaid, how would that be determined?
President Travis. Yes, Dean Deitch?
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so, I'm, I'm Suri Deitch and, um, with President Travis, co-chaired this task force. The intention of the, um, definition in the report is to describe a very broad range of experiential learning activities. And it's not necessarily the place of the reporter, the task force, to say what should be paid or what should be unpaid, but rather, I think, to set a, a standard um, in terms of the characteristics of what we consider to be a strong experiential learning activity. Um, I think that in terms of, of internships, so there's a category of paid internships, unpaid internships. Um, I think our bias would be in favor of saying that they should be paid wherever possible, but that's not always possible. And, uh, the definition category was really there as an information gathering device. And I think will continue to be so. That's an important distinction. And we wanted to try to get a sense of the universe of these activities, um, across CUNY at, at this point.
So who will take on the recommendation and then determine?
What would be paid and unpaid? Well, it's not so much that we would determine what would be paid and unpaid, but rather that we would collect information and data on what is paid and unpaid.
The observation that I would add, uh, to, uh, to Suri's summary of, of where we, where we ended up as a, as a task force is that the one consequence of the existence of the task force has been to stimulate a lot of conversation across the university about experiential learning. And, uh, there's, for example, a conference at Guttman on May sixth to bring together, uh, people who are doing this work, faculty and others doing this work across the university. So my prediction would be that your question, uh, across campuses, uh, on campuses across the university, without her having taken a position.
Yeah, no other question? Let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Okay, now, the following items, there are about eighteen distinguished individuals who are nominated for, to receive honorary degree and across nine schools and campuses. So I suggest that we move them as a block. You're welcome to comment. Um, obviously, they all work well. And if there's any question about any specific individual, rather than I give a vote, ten times to say yes, or eighteen times. Um, so let's go through one by one and then we will vote at the end as a block unless there are specific questions.
Right.
Okay, item number B twelve is John Jay College Resolution to Award, uh, Two Honorary Degrees.
Yes. Eve Ensler is a Tony Award-winning playwright, producer, writer, and activist. After the universal success of her work, The Vagina Monologues, Eve created V-Day, a global activist movement to end violence against women and girls. More, more recently, she founded One Billion Rising to extend that work internationally. Kimberly Williams Crenshaw is a distinguished professor of law at the University of California, Los Angeles, and Columbia University Law School. She is one of the intellectual founders of critical race theory, which strives to understand how race, gender, and class intersect and influence access to social, economic, and criminal justice. So, those are the two nominees for John J. Jay College. Lehman College, yes, sorry, presents three nominees. David Gonzalez is an award-winning journalist at the New York Times, where his career has spanned three decades. He's known for stories focusing on the neighborhoods of New York City while reflecting on larger social and cultural issues in American society. Among his many honors, he was inducted into the National Association of Hispanic Journalists Hall of Fame. Sonia Manzano is a writer and actress who has affected the lives of millions of parents and children since the nineteen seventies. She is best known for her longtime role as Maria on the PBS series Sesame Street, as well as for being, um, an author and champion for literacy. Ms. Manzano was the recipient of the groundbreaking Latina Lifetime Achievement Award from the National Association of Latina Leaders. Marc Messier, a winner of six Stanley, that's now something completely different, is considered one of the greatest National Hockey League players of all time and was inducted into the Hall of Fame in two thousand and seven. He is CEO of Kingsbridge National Ice Center, a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar redevelopment of the Kingsbridge Armory into the world's largest indoor ice facility. Mr. Messier is dedicated to many philanthropic causes and serves on the board of the New York Police and Fire Widows and Children's Benefit Fund. Because of his commitment to charity and service, the NHL in two thousand and six created the Marc Messier Leadership Award. Good going. Okay. Queens College, should I do it? Yes.
So far, so good.
Yes, okay. Queens College. Ira Katz Nelson is a public intellectual who co-founded Politics and Society, one of the foremost journals of the social sciences and humanities. He has been a Guggenheim Fellow and was elected as a Fellow of the American Academy of Arts and Sciences and the American Philosophical Society. and the American Philosophical Society. Dr. Katz Nelson has written widely on issues of race, class, and inequality. And Misty Copeland is an accomplished ballerina who has made history for being the first black woman to perform the lead role of Odette O'Deeby in American Ballet Theater Swan Lake. She is also an author and an advocate for children and youth. Her exemplary work has led to her induction into the Boys and Girls Club National Hall of Fame. Ms. Copeland has also been appointed by President Obama to serve on the President's Council on Fitness, Sports, and Nutrition. Also at Queens College, Darren Walker heads the nation's largest philanthropic organization, the Ford Foundation. Darren has been a leader in the nonprofit and philanthropic sectors for 20 years, working on an array of social justice issues, including education, human rights, urban development, and free expression. As COO of Harlem's leading community development organization, the Abyssinian Development Corporation, he oversaw development of over 1,000 new units of low-income housing and Harlem's first commercial development in 20 years. CUNY School of Law is putting forward Jonathan Lippman, who served as chief judge of the state of New York and chief judge of the Court of Appeals from 2009 through 2015. As New York State's chief judge, he championed equal access to justice issues, and throughout his tenure has been committed to fostering a justice system that is independent, open, accountable, and responsive to the people it serves. Brooklyn College nominates the Honorable Deborah Poritz, class of 58, who was attorney general in the state of New Jersey from 1994 to 1996, although currently working in private practice. While serving as attorney general, she defended Megan's Law in both state and federal courts as chief justice on the New Jersey Supreme Court. Judge Poritz presided over milestone cases and wrote a landmark decision declaring that the Boy Scouts of America could not ban gays from membership in New Jersey, likening homophobia to sexism and racial discrimination. Howard Branson, also class of 58, Brooklyn College, has had an outstanding career in commercial and artistic lighting design. He has illuminated the Statue of Liberty, Battery Park City, and London Bridge, among other structures. Mr. Branson's light, lighting expertise has also had applications in the field of medicine. He helped develop the use of ultraviolet light applications to control the spread of diseases such as tuberculosis. The College of Staten Island, Khalid Iqbal is a world-renowned Alzheimer's disease researcher. Dr. Iqbal is the recipient of the Potamkin Prize for Alzheimer's Disease Research from the American Academy of Neurology and the Zenith Award from the Alzheimer's Association, which in 2007 established a Khalid Iqbal Lifetime Achievement Award for Alzheimer's Disease Research. Dr. Iqbal has written and edited many works on research advances in Alzheimer's and related neurodegenerative diseases. He currently serves on the editorial board of several leading journals. Also from the College of Staten Island, John Douglas Thompson is distinguished classical actor. He has been hailed by Ben Brantley of The New York Times as one of the most compelling actors of his generation and by renowned Columbia University Shakespeare scholar Jim Shapiro as the greatest classical actor in America. Mr. Thompson has performed in all of Shakespeare's plays. This season, he'll be playing leading roles in Anric Ibson's A Doll's House and August Stringberg's The Father at Theater for a New Audience. The Graduate School and University Center puts forth three nominations. Lorna Simpson is an internationally renowned artist who first came to prominence for her large-scale works that drew on photography and text to confront the topic of race. Today, she is known worldwide for her provocative works that address concepts of gender, ethnicity, culture, and identity. Her work has been displayed at the Museum of Modern Art and the Museum of Contemporary Art, and 2007, The Whitney presented a 20-year retrospective of Lorna Simpson's work. Reba White Williams, class of 96, has had a wide and varied career as an expert on fine art prints, a mystery writer, and a philanthropist. As writer, her works have appeared in American Artists, Art and Auctions, and Journal of the Print World, among others. More recently, she is the author of four mystery novels. She is an alumna of the Graduate Center, having earned her PhD in art history in 1996. Curtis Wong is principal researcher at Microsoft Research. He is an inventor, creator, and creator devoted to the future of digital media and interactive entertainment. He has had considerable time to work in nonprofits involved in education and art and helped produce the online streaming interactive website, The Age of AIDS, which explores the AIDS pandemic. We are getting close. Macaulay Honors College is pleased to put forth Marion Nessel, the Paulette Goddard Professor in the Department of Nutrition, Food Studies, and Public Health at NYU. Professor Nessel has a longstanding commitment to public knowledge and transparency in food politics. She has contributed to Macaulay's science-forward curriculum and is widely recognized as the leading voice in public science education and the advancement of critical thinking about science issues. Finally, Medgar Edgerr's College puts forth veteran democratic political strategist Donna Brazil, who is currently chairperson on the Democratic National Committee and is author, syndicated columnist, and television political commentator. She was interim chair of the Democratic National Committee, and in 2000 became the first African-American to serve as a presidential campaign manager heading Al Gore's presidential campaign. In the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina, Ms. Brazil served for four years as a member of the Board of Directors of the Louisiana Recovery Authority, rebuilding her home state and advocating on behalf, on its behalf, on a national stage.
I move adoption of the resolutions to award honorary degrees to all of these extraordinarily meritorious individuals.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Second of the trustee Di Martino. Now we can open for discussion. Aren't you glad I moved it as a block?
Yes, yes.
Any question to all these distinguished individuals and honaries?
I think it's wonderful how this list exemplifies the extraordinary breadth and depth of our university, from sports to fine arts to science to public policy, the whole range.
Yeah, from Messier to Misty.
Yes.
That's quite a gamut.
That's nice. That should be the CUNY matters headline for.
It's a great group, it's a great group.
Also shows you the power of the city, especially this.
Yes, yes.
If there are no questions, let's move to question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, the motion carries.
Thank you.
May I have the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much.